Good evening, board members. We're going to move into something a little more positive, something you can smile about and be really proud about, is the direction of Cabarrus County Schools. Before I get into the presentation tonight, I'd like to invite Patty Norris up to join me here in the front. She's a teacher at Central Cabarrus High School. You've met Patty before. And Jessica Garner, if you'll join me here at the front as well. Jessica is our curriculum coordinator for the district. They're going to be presenting part of this as well. But tonight is twofold. One is to really explain to you our initial launch with digital, the digital conversion in Cabarrus County Schools, and then to highlight a special group that has started with our high school folks that we're calling the Blended Learning Cohort. So I'm going to get us started at first with the digital conversion. And we've really tried to capture this initiative under the word "personalization." I think as we look at the landscape of society, we're seeing a more and more personalized approach to almost everything. Everything you interact with, from companies to Netflix to your iPhone, is very personalized to you, and I think education is moving in that direction as well. So this is, while technology is kind of the meat of where we're going, it's for the purpose of personalization. As you know, what we've done over the last several years is really to identify first, what is that core curriculum? Because while we want our educational options to be personalized, we understand that there are some core knowledge that we want every kid that graduates from high school to know and be able to do. And that's why we set about to define that core curriculum and then layer that personalization on top of those core pieces. So here you see a progression on that road to personalization. First, it starts with the foundation of our core curriculum. On top of that, you have differentiated resources that allow you to meet that core curriculum. And then finally, you have what we're calling these individual learning progressions, and I'll talk a little bit about that. That kind of frames the discussion for this evening. As you know, we've done a lot of work with our core curriculum, but the question then becomes, while we're trying to get every kid in the district to learn this amount of stuff, they all come to us at different places, they all have different reading levels, and so we need differentiated resources to really meet the needs of all 30 kids in a particular teacher's classroom. And technology is really allowing us to do that. And the major launch that we will have in that initial level is the replacements of what we've typically called textbooks, right, to more digital online resources. If you can imagine a textbook used to teach biology, it was written at a certain grade level, and kids that could not read that textbook could not really learn biology that well, okay? But now we have the ability to differentiate those resources based on the adaptability of technology so that every kid can learn biology regardless of their reading level. And those resources take the form of what we used to call textbooks. Now, you've seen this slide before, but I do want to highlight it since we did just talk about budgets. This is not free, right? So digital resources come at a cost per student per year, and I do want to highlight for our audience and for the board that while we're thankful for the budget increases this year in teacher salary, it did not do much to help us with the resource side. The governor's budget looked really, really promising. It would have almost doubled our resources for textbook. But as you heard just now, we're basically not getting anything increased in our textbook fund. And you can see the loss in revenue over the last six years and what it costs, what we get per kid right now in 2014 for those textbooks. That's just kind of the backdrop there. What's most exciting is some of our partners that we've developed over this past year. And so these are the three major players for digital content coming into 2014, '15 that our teachers will have access to and will be doing some heavy training on with our teachers in the first four months of school. And all of those, these three partners all reside within the major partner, which is iCurio. And that's the product that we've demonstrated to you before. And I am going to take a moment and launch out here to show you what this will look like from a parent and a student perspective. We've put this on the A.T. Allen website. And really, what we're kind of branding this as in the initial step is that we're trying to make the connection for our community that textbooks are a thing of the past, and now we have digital resources. And that connection for our folks is through the product of iCurio. And you can see that on every school's website, you will have that portal into our digital resource product, okay? And inside iCurio will be Discovery Education Resources as well as defined STEM resources. And so from here, you would click onto that, and every student would have a login. They would be able to access those resources, and they are aligned to our curriculum maps, okay? So instead of having Chapter 1, Chapter 2, Chapter 3, we have Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3, okay? So parents and students will be able to use that online resource for their learning. Let me get back to our slide presentation. So that's the quality digital content that's differentiated for our students that we're launching this coming year. Another piece of that, and this is, we're dabbling in this market, is the adaptability of computers and technology to really map out learning progressions for students. And the two products that we are going all-in on, we went to Vegas and we bet on Alex and DreamBox, which are two math programs that we believe have the power and ability to really enhance the math education for our students. And so Alex is a program that will be used in our middle schools and high schools, and DreamBox is a program that will be used in our elementary schools. And these two programs really dig into the skill gaps that students have and really work to fill in those skill gaps in conjunction with the teacher so that students are raising their achievement in all areas. Allison will tell you that she gets kids in 9th grade and 10th grade that come to her from all different levels. Some know their fractions and some don't. And so that is one of the innate challenges of teaching, is taking a group of 30 kids and really differentiating that instruction. So we hope that these products will help teachers like Allison differentiate their instruction even more, giving them the data they need to know what the kids know. That's half the battle, knowing what the kids already know so I can tailor my instruction to the kids that need it, okay? And that leads us to just blended learning in general. So I want to give you some context here. I want you to think of blended learning as a continuum. On the far right, you know, it's more and more technology, and the far less, it's more and more teacher. And here's where I kind of, you know, ballparked where we are as a county. I would guess that most of our Cabarrus County classrooms fall more on the more teacher side of that blended learning approach. And with the step of incorporating Alex and DreamBox with our math classrooms, I believe that our math classrooms will really take a large step into that continuum to be really blended. So that is a teacher and technology working synchronously together for the purpose of learning. Patty and Jessica are going to share with you a little bit more on that far end of the spectrum of some of the work that we're doing with teacher reach and rotation model teaching, okay? So I'll leave that to them. And so just to kind of set that up, one of the things that we're really excited about is using a product called Schoology, which is a learning management system, to really house all of these products together, to be that one point of entry for students, to make sense of all these different products. So as they kind of make sense of their learning, they're using Schoology as kind of the first point of entry. And teachers are still that center, that engine of learning for our classrooms. I want to be very clear about that. Sometimes we can get a little nervous or paranoid about the future of education and believe that maybe we can learn without human beings, and I don't believe that. I still believe that at the center of every classroom is a great teacher, and these are tools that wrap around our teachers to meet the needs of kids. And as technology develops, I think it'll really enhance the education that can happen in our classrooms. So we want to make sure we honor the work of our teachers and that our best teachers are really embracing these tools and demonstrating how they can meet the learning needs of all of our kids. With that, I'm going to let Jessica get us started with some of the work with the blended learning, and then Patty's going to tell you about some of her work this summer in preparing for this year at Central Cabarrus High School.
Good evening. As Jason said, I'm Jessica Garner, and I joined the district around the end of February, and we have been rolling with blended learning since then. And so I wanted to start by sharing with you the different models that we're talking about. And so as you look at this slide, we really have, taking the continuum that Jason just described, we've really kind of mapped out three different buckets, if you will, of teachers and what their classrooms will look like. And so if you look at the left, our vision is really for all teachers and students to have some type of digital conversion in their classrooms. Teachers are using technology, students are using technology, and in a lot of cases, this is already true. We know that teachers use technology to enter attendance, and they use technology to enter their grades, they use the SchoolWires website to post announcements for parents, for students to access different pieces of technology. And so this is happening already in a lot of our classrooms. And if you think back to that previous slide, it's still mostly teacher, but there are some digital tools that are being used. And so as we continue to move towards some of this digital content with using iCurio, really as an online digital textbook, you'll see this digital conversion model. And that's our vision for all teachers, because we do believe that there are some technology tools that can make lives of teachers a little bit easier with some of the minutia. So then we move into the rotation model. And this is where our blended learning cohort, we have about 20 teachers, and 12 of them are doing the rotation model, and eight are doing teacher reach. And so what that looks like is that with the rotation model, and I will say that in my classroom as a teacher, not too long ago, I used the rotation model quite a bit with my students. I had access to laptop carts that I checked out for my students. Sometimes I would share those carts, and we would just use a few computers in the classroom. But this is the teacher working with a small group of students on their particular needs while the rest of the students are engaged with some type of technology in the classroom on a rotation model, if you will. Our elementary school classrooms do the rotation model with and without technology all the time when they work with individual groups of students, and they do learning stations. So this is really just a souped-up name, if you will, for doing learning stations and incorporating some machines into that and some technology into that. And so this, it doesn't look too different, and that's why we're calling it the rotation model. We believe that this is a model that many of our teachers can adopt in the district. And then our last group is the teacher reach. And the reason, we've wrestled a little bit with the name, I will tell you that, but the reason that we've kind of landed on teacher reach is that we are trying to take those teachers that we know to be effective and let them have a wider reach, if you will. So we have here a few, and this is just a few teachers at this point. Right now, we have eight in the district. They're all high school teachers. And our goal is for them to break the traditional ratios. It's a little bit of an oxymoron that we are going to increase the amount of students that each teacher will see, expand their reach, if you will, in order to personalize it for those students. And one of the books that I'm reading through with this and one that we're going to be using with some of our groups uses the term "mass customized learning," mass customization, kind of like what Amazon does and what Apple does and some of the different companies that Jason's referred to. And so we believe that with this type of approach, the students will have a very robust online experience using Schoology, where they will enter and they'll work through some online components, the students will collaborate online. And this is the model where teachers will see their students depending on the students' needs. So it will break the traditional model of school. Students won't necessarily come to school every single day if they have the opportunity for that. We do have some schools where the reach model is happening within the building. So at Central Cabarrus, where Patty's going to talk to you about, they are doing the teacher reach model, but the kids won't actually flex in and out of the building. They will be in supervised areas in the building, and if they don't have the means for technology at home, they'll be using those computers in the building, but in a supervised space, not necessarily with their teacher. So they'll see their teacher, they'll interact with their teacher through the Schoology website, and then several times, a couple of times a week, and depending on their needs, they'll meet with the teacher face-to-face in smaller groups. So it's a very different model, and there has been a lot of, a lot of schools and districts around the country have been trying this, and so far, the success rates are pretty good. There was actually just an article out about this week, and this is a little bit different, but 100 kindergarten students in a classroom with three teachers. So I think that it is possible. I don't know that I would want to be in that classroom. So that is what we're looking at for these models, and we've really asked our principals to take the lead for what that looks like in their building. We have schools that look very different from one another, and we really felt like the principals needed to be the ones to take ownership and to decide what was best for the students and the parents in their building. And so in some schools where the students have the capacity, they are allowed to stay home during that time period when they are not meeting face-to-face with their teacher, and they'll work at home online. In other schools, the students don't have the capacity to, with the transportation or with the devices. And so we've asked, we told the principals, it's their responsibility to make sure that any student that wants access to this, they have to provide the technology in the building and the supervised space for them to use that, even if they're doing the teacher reach. And so this is our timeline, and as you can see, we started with high school. We trained them in the spring. We've had teachers working all summer on building courses in Schoology, both the rotation teachers and the teacher reach teachers. And they will implement those courses coming up here in a couple of weeks. I'm really excited to see what they look like in their classrooms, and Patty's going to talk to you a little bit about that process. We will continue to add groups as, after this first group is implemented. We are going to start working with the middle school folks in the fall. We are going to do some book studies with them to kind of get their visioning correct and do some paradigm shifting on what a traditional classroom looks like and where we're moving. And then they will start to implement with just a couple of units in the spring. So they won't necessarily start with the full-blown course, but they'll start with a few units, and then we will allow additional groups to follow. And then we will start training our elementary folks this spring while the middle school folks are implementing. And then they will implement next fall. And obviously, with elementary, we're not going to have students flexing in and out of the school building. It's a little bit different than high school students that can drive, but we've seen some models around the area even where the elementary school students are breaking that ratio and allowing teachers that have specific strengths to work with students and students with deficiencies to get help in the areas where they need it. So that is where we are going with this, okay? I am going to invite Patty to come up and talk. And Patty is a teacher at Central Cabarrus. She's an English teacher, and she is entering her 31st year of teaching, which I think should be applauded because she has not, she has lived through the Common Core implementation, and now she's living through blended learning. And so I'm really excited for you to hear what she's been doing and the work she's been working on.
Thanks. I think sort of given you the big picture and the overall thing, and I'm going to tell you about what it's like for me and what it's looked like for me this summer. First of all, I want to start out by telling you, I've been in education for 31 years, and I've taught senior English many, many times. And blended learning is going to change the way I teach that traditional English class. I'm going to teach it in a totally different way that I hope is exciting for the kids and for me. Students will still write essays, they'll still read Shakespeare, they'll still write research papers, but they're going to do it through collaboration and by using 21st century technology. They're going to study Shakespeare through a CSI investigation of a murder scene, they're going to explore characterization by creating Facebook pages for characters and communicating as those characters. They're going to compete, they're going to complete a survivor activity where they have to work as a tribe as they work through the author's use of theme. They're going to come up with a cumulative research paper topic as they collaborate with their peers. So it's going to be some of the same things that they've always done, but just in a totally different way. And I feel like education is finally taking strides to change and meet these young adults in their world in a way that interests them, and I'm really proud to be a part of such a big change that we've needed to make for a long time. Another change that we're making in Cabarrus County is through curriculum. The English curriculum writing team spent a week this summer developing new themes to fit the Common Core. And these themes are connected to the history classes that are being taught at each level, and they have real-life relevance. So while these kids are trying to figure out who they are and where they want to go to college and what they want to do for a living, these themes are all tied to identity, helping them figure those things out as they work through the English curriculum. And that's really exciting to me, to make it relevant and important to them. I've spent the entire summer planning this class. There has not been one day that I have not done something on this class. So you want to talk about working for no pay? It's been a lot. And there's a team from Central Cabarrus that went to NCAT this past summer. We spent, two weeks ago, we spent a whole week, and we worked 10 to 12 hours every day working on our blended learning classes. We put in assignments, we made videos, we did all the stuff that we needed to do to make our classes have academic rigor, have personalization for the kids, to include the technology, and we've done all this work upfront. So when school starts, my class is ready to go, and I don't have to do any lesson plans, I don't have to run off any papers. So the way we look at this is, we're going to have time to do nothing but feedback for our students. That'll give us time to individualize what they need, that'll give us time to give them real feedback that really helps them achieve what they need to achieve, because our class is finished. It feels kind of strange to think that I'm not going to be working every night creating a test or coming up with a lesson plan for the next day because it's all in Schoology now. So we're pretty excited about that. And the students are going to have more control over what they do. They'll have options, you know? They'll have the regular curriculum, but they'll have options to make choices and do things that they want to do to get the points and the grades that they need. Plus, if we see that they need something extra, we can assign that. If they need some enrichment, we can assign that, and there'll be time for us to do that. So I'm just kind of hoping that this is going to be a great thing. We're going to be more available, because not only can they get to us during regular school hours, but we'll be available way past the regular school day through email and through this Schoology course. So I'm really hoping this is going to bring excitement to the students the way it's brought excitement to me. You know, as a teacher who has taught for 31 years, there's only so many times you can read Macbeth, you know? But looking at this in a totally different way, it's very exciting for us. So we're excited for the choices and the changes that it's going to bring for our kids. That's it.
Fantastic. Jason, do you have anything to add?
Well, yeah, just, you can see why we're really excited about the future, and I think as we continue to add teachers to these cohorts, I think you're going to continue to see that excitement. I do want to, I would be remiss to not do this last slide, just keeping the future in sight financially. As we move into this digital world, it requires digital tools. I find it ironic that in 2014, the one budget they did cut was the digital resources budget, right? And so, you know, those are the type of things that we're going to have to wrestle with. You know, this last slide here just kind of gives you a quick snapshot, just ballpark figures of what it's going to take our district to really think about a device for students. There's a lot of different ways to slice that apple. Kelly Clutz, Kelly Probst and myself are working together to try to bring some real tangible, real-life solutions to the Budget Committee this go-round. So you can expect us to kind of have some choices available for our leaders in how we make that happen. But it will require more funds or reallocation of funds. That's the only way to do it, and it's probably going to require a little bit of both. So we're not going to talk about that tonight, but we always have to put that on the forefront of our thoughts, so that's all I have for tonight.
Fantastic. Well, that's an excellent presentation, and I can understand your enthusiasm, all of you, and thank you very much. And we will, for questions, we'll start with Dr. Phillips.
Okay. Well, this is great. I'm glad to see the district is moving in this direction, and I'm also glad to see that you're doing it incrementally and not whole hogging, so you can maybe have, learn from experiences and leverage off of that. At the Central Cabarrus High School, is Ms. Norris's 12th grade English class the only one that will be doing this, or will all 12th grade be doing that?
It won't be all 12th grade, no. She'll be, I believe you're the only English class doing it.
I'm the only English teacher, but I have 53 students in first period.
Right. So she has 53 kids in first period, and so we have both sections going on. There are four teachers at Central, Spanish, math, English, and biology.
Okay. Well, the reason why I was asking was that this way, we have a control group so that we can compare, and we can see, not only do this, I mean, you might even consider doing a survey at the end to see whether students really were excited in your class and bored in the other ones.
Yeah.
We plan to implement surveys, like at the end of every unit that we do, to see what helps the kids and what they need and what they're struggling with, to try to make changes as we go.
Okay. So you will be getting feedback along the lines, and then, this being Cabarrus County Schools, I assume you will go over the EOG scores with a fine-tooth comb to discern if there was a 2/10 of a percent difference.
That's right. That's right. And I will add to Mr. Phillips that we're doing this with honors courses and non-honors courses. So this is not exclusive to, you know, our upper, our students that are achieving AP or honors. So we're doing this with all of our kids, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
I'm glad you brought an English teacher in here, because I wouldn't relate to math or other stuff as well. And planning probably was the most fun of being a teacher. I mean, the stand-up and the interaction and the aha moments was a great deal of very rewarding moments as well, but the planning, you know, makes it all possible. 50-something students, oi! Can you handle that?
I can, because I'm not going to have to spend any of my time planning, nor am I going to have to stand at the Zicron machine, because everything's on mine. So I'm hoping I can handle it. Research papers are a little scary.
So what, just playing devil's advocate here, what have you got to get out of the students to get them to adjust to or adapt to that new kind of paradigm? I mean, for 11, 12 years already, they will have been in one class with 18 or 20 other students and one teacher in one period or something like. They're going to have to come into your environment and say, oh gracious, I'm one of 50-something. What adjustments is a child going to have to make as a young adult?
We did a lot of work upfront. So we did a lot of surveys, and we talked to the students, and we've made sure that we put the right students in the course to start with. So I think that's going to help. And they understand this is going to be different. And I think that every kid that we are targeting is somebody who's ready for a change. They're ready for something different. And we've had meetings with parents, and we're going to have more meetings with parents just to let them know what it's going to be required of their child to do.
And this is just a devil's advocate question. How do you know that?
Well-
How do you know that?
We-
Or do you hope that?
We hope that. We hope, and then we're going to make adjustments as we go. And our principal is very supportive, and he has said, if you have a kid that's there that's really struggling, we have the ability to pull them out and put them back in a regular English class if that's necessary.
At the same level or-
At the same level, doing the same curriculum, because we're doing the Common Core and the curriculum that we have, so they should be able to come from one and go to the other.
With no foul, no harm kind of thing, just straight over into the normal-
Except it's going to hurt my feelings, because I'll take it very personally, because I've worked very hard to make this fun and easy to navigate and easy to succeed. So other than that, everything will be okay.
Okay. Well, your enthusiasm, you know, is inspiring, and I think, I know you can do it. I know you can do it. I can tell that. 31 years, I know you can do it.
I think they just wanted to point out how old I was.
No, 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 none of that. Bandwidth comes to mind as a technology concern. Everybody hitting the routers and the technology kind of infrastructure all at the same time, can we make this happen? I think I know the answer, but you tell me.
Yes. I was hoping Jason was going to brag about us, but he failed to do that. We have one of the most robust networks in the state, and we're not concerned at all.
You're not concerned at Central Cabarrus, or you're not concerned at A.T. Allen?
Even district-wide. If we were to put every child on a device in every single classroom, I'm not worried about bandwidth, and I'm certainly not worried about access points.
You think 30,000 students could all hit enter at the same time?
I think we could handle it.
All right. All right. If you say so. All right. Do, I don't know how to ask this question, but in moving these students to this environment, are there other technologies or other things that they won't need or can be retired or not used, obviously not left laying around unused, but redistributed to other environments? I guess what I'm saying is, what's the duplication or what's the, what are the other kind of items that these types of students or blocks of students going into the 22nd century ahead of us all, they will not need certain other resources that can be redistributed elsewhere? I don't know how to really answer the question, but I'm trying to think in terms of physical textbooks, old-school types of resources that won't be conducive to this environment. Now, y'all are shaking your head, and you know what I mean, but I don't know what all that menu is. How are we going to efficiently use other resources that this environment would not need because we're using the more advanced technologies?
So most of the courses that are being developed will virtually be paperless, so that is one obvious advantage. I mean, through the online environment of Schoology, students will turn in their work, they will submit their work, they'll receive their work, all virtually in a digital platform. So textbooks and paper is one thing that can be redistributed. But I think even more so, that would be a small item in my mind, as if this works, right? If a teacher can teach 50 students at one time because she never sees more than 20 or five of them at any given time, and the rest of the time is in this virtual environment, then we've saved time, and what used to take us two teachers to teach now takes us one teacher to teach. And so that is one of the advantages, because we know that some kids don't need that personalized one-on-one approach, but we know that other kids, you know, need a 1 to 10 ratio. So we can redistribute that over to another group of kids that actually needs more support because some kids need less support. because some kids need less support. So that will come in time. I'm curious to see how that plays out.
And finally, we've had other discussions of other programs that are specialized across the district. I presume that there'll be a lot of extensive communication to parents about what their children are, I don't mean, I mean this in a good way, getting into, but what their children are venturing into, maybe is a better way to put it. But I hope there'll be extensive communication to parents, transparent dealings with parents as to how their children are progressing and moving ahead in this program, and, you know, explicit buy-in from the parents so that they know what their child is gaining and the advantages that child is accruing from these programs, so that the parents are very, very, very well informed.
There's a couple of really good things for parents. First of all, we've had several parent meetings. We explained, we made them sign before we registered their kids into the class. But within Schoology, every parent will get a login ID. So at any given time, they can log in and look at their child's grades in Schoology, they can look at the assignments, they can look at the upcoming test, upcoming projects, and so they will have access to that themselves, so they can see everything that's happening in Schoology as we go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're living in exciting times, there's no doubt, you know, and, you know, Patty, with your excitement, you know, I've had to say in a long time that the ship is only as good as its captain, you know. When you run in this program out there, I can see that it's definitely gonna be successful. But, you know, I can see, though, just looking at it from my point of view, 'cause I'm probably getting to be one of the oldest, if not the oldest, in the room, you know? I don't like to brag on that, but I am getting, you know, to me, though, it just seems like this is the evolution of education, how it is being delivered. This is a very effective way of showing how that education has evolved. And it's like you either get on board, or you get left behind. And I don't know anybody that wants to get left behind. The parents, they want their children in the forefront, and, you know, I can see a lot of implications in this program, good and some not so good. As, Jason, you'd mentioned, where it takes two to do, now one can do. So that would be a bad implication, because, obviously, if you're getting funding for, hypothetically, a thousand teachers, and you go Schoolology district-wide, based on what you're saying, you reduce the need from a thousand to 500. And say, and this is all hypothetical, and this is thinking down the road, 10, 15, 20 years from now. But then again, though, it is, in my opinion, the evolution of education, how it is moving forward. And one thing about students that I've learned over this last 12 years is they're gonna move with or without you. They're gonna get the technology they need, and their parents is gonna get what they need, whether we supply it or whether we don't, they're gonna get it. But one of the big implications, though, is if you think about this from a big picture, the big picture, and that is looking at funding for education, and I mentioned this earlier about the deterioration of public education, and it's primarily based on funding. But if you can better use the funding that you're getting, then obviously you could probably accomplish a whole lot more if you can find ways to better use it. And the way that I see this, it's a better way to use the funding. And, but anyway, I like the way it's laid out. We'll do the high school to start with. It'll just be one 12th grade class, English class, 53 students. And then next year, we'll do the middle school implementing in spring of 2015, and then doing the elementary school in the fall of 2015. But I don't know what the district's goals are as far as Schoolology. Do we plan on making this a district-wide program at some point? Are we just gonna do the high school, one class, and then the middle school, elementary, and all? Are we gonna eventually try to work it into where that it would possibly be a district-wide program? Of course, it's all gonna depend on success, there's no doubt. But I believe, though, the success of any program depends on the leaders, and I've got confidence in our leaders, our administration, so there's no problem there. But will the students buy into it? Will the parents buy into it? And more importantly, will the citizens of Cabarrus County that fund public education, will they buy into it? So it's gonna, it's a total buy-in, there's no doubt. But then again, I'm looking at the big picture, guys. That's what I'm looking at, the big picture, because this is just short-term, what we're looking at now, short-term. We just getting kicked off the ground, we're just getting going, and all. But anyway, I don't take up no more time, but I'm excited about it for education, because I can see it moving in a direction different than what it has in the past. So I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Schumacher, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. I know you're...
Jason, thank you. Ms. Garner, thank you. Ms. Norris, thank you. And I really appreciate your passion in this. First question I have, you have passion, how do you pass that on? Because if you're no longer planning the lessons because they're already planned for you, now comes the big thing. The big struggle will be for the next teacher who comes behind you, who wasn't involved in the creation of the product. You know the product, you worked the product. How do we get them to that point? That's a what-if question, you don't need to answer that. But that's a big challenge that you're gonna have, is transferring your knowledge and getting them as passionate about it and using the tool as effectively as you're going to be able to use it. My next piece will be student performance and making sure that we don't allow children who won't be adaptive to this. Because I think, like, there'd be a lot that will be, but there're gonna be those crack, those who are falling into the cracks that, and we've gotta be very sensitive and make sure we identify them early in the process, at least give them some kinda remediation process or set-aside process, because what you don't want them to do is fail halfway through the year, and you find out that they're just not working, and now you've kinda cheated them out of half of a year of education, and they don't feel good about themselves. And I don't know what, how this Schoolology is going to be thought of, because the children that are gonna be in it, or the students that are gonna be in it, are gonna think that they're something very special. And those who fall out of the program will no longer think of themselves in any other way, maybe. And so we've gotta figure a way to deal with that fallout so that we don't lose them in whatever disqualification process you have, or, so that's a huge challenge. The next is your guidelines and how you're gonna audit how you teach the program, because I guess it's gonna be at all eight high schools, is that correct?
Right now, I think we have four high schools doing teacher reach. All eight high schools are in the blended learning cohort doing either rotation model or teacher reach, but only four high schools, I believe, are doing teacher reach.
So four are doing what Ms. Norris is doing, including Ms. Norris. So there's three others doing what she's doing.
Central, Hickory Ridge, J.M. Robinson, and Concord High School.
And I would challenge you to make sure...
And Northwest, I'm sorry, so five.
Are you going to set up some type of PLC between those four people to make sure that they're auditing each other, making sure that they're strengthening each other?
Correct. And that's why we've intentionally used that word cohort. So they've been meeting together since April. And so they've had professional development. Jessica and Jennifer Jenkins have been actively providing professional development to those groups. They've been meeting together, they've been getting feedback on their courses. So Jessica, in fact, this weekend was working without pay and giving feedback to every single person involved in the cohort, saying, here's what I like about your course, here's what you need to think about, and here's some suggestions as you kinda gear up for August 25th.
And so basically, your cohorts are probably meeting through the internet, doing some type of...
Yeah, both face-to-face and virtually.
And I'd like to say, the four of us that are doing it at Central, it's actually three at Central and our tech facilitator. We spent a whole week at NCAT doing nothing but planning together. And we're teaching different subjects, but still, because the process is so much the same. So we've become this little tight-knit family, and we're spending all this time together above and beyond what they've asked us, because we want so much for it to be a success. So we've sort of, you know, bonded there, too.
And while you're up here, since you were working actually on the curriculum, not to be confused with the standards.
Right.
How are you vetting material? Because, you know, you can introduce material, and philosophically, it may be, you know, 'cause this is the US of A, and we really want our students to come out here, appreciate our country for what it is. And I don't know what kinda material you're using or how you're using it, and I don't mean to come across as some extreme right-winger, but at the same time, I'm very passionate about the exceptionalism of our country and what it brings out in our, could bring out in our students. And I want each child to understand that because they live in a country that allows them this freedom, that they can get it. Are we gonna make sure that our course reinforces the exceptionalism that they could have, not because they're great people, but because they have this opportunity to think freely, express themselves freely, and that type of thing?
So I hear two parts to that question. One is, how do you vet content, right? And so that is, you know, the resources that we saw here. We hold annually what we call resource fairs, where we invite vendors to a big location, and teachers come in, and they have a rubric, and they go from station to station, and they evaluate the resources based on the standards and based on our curriculum and based on our belief statements about what we believe good teaching should look like, what good instructional resources should look like, engaging materials. So that's how we go through the process of adopting some of these programs that you've seen here tonight. The second piece to your question is more of a philosophical part, which is, how do we ensure that our kids are embodying what you would probably call the American spirit, or that exceptionalism in the United States?
Yeah, what do we actually believe?
Yeah. So, you know, that is addressed in some of the social studies standards to some extent, but Cabarrus County Schools has not adopted, not that I know of, anything in particular that's related to that particular strand of what we teach. And so if that's something that we need to do, then that would be something the Board would have to direct us to do. I will tell you that most of our teachers believe that as well. It comes, you know, I always tell people, you teach who you are, right? And so, you know, teachers are gonna embody that as they teach civics, as they teach American history, as they teach world history. But there is nothing necessarily in the standards that say you have to teach American exceptionalism. Does that make sense?
But I would like to add that the English curriculum, through Common Core, we now teach U.S. historical documents in English. So a lot of what I do is comparing a Shakespeare speech to the Constitution and the effects that one had on the other. And there's a big portion of my British literature class that is now American documents.
Bringing up older literature that's supported and enhanced, or...
How many times do they have to look at the Declaration of Independence?
If you look at the Common Core curriculum, they're gonna have read the Declaration of Independence four times. My class will be the fourth. So I've gotta find a new way and a new approach to look at that and dig in deeper than they have before. So that's been a huge challenge for me as an English teacher. I have two sons that are back there supporting me that are both history majors, and I'm like, help me, help me, you know? So we pulled in a lot of historical stuff, and they've helped me make a lot of ties. Neither one of them do anything with the history degree. One's in vet school, one's gonna be a food scientist, but they're huge history buffs, and they've really helped. And, but that has been a huge part of the process, is learning how to tie that historical document component into my literature.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'm excited. I like your enthusiasm as well. Is there a way, like Jason did, to log into that Icurio, that you could log into the Schoolology for us, or show us what a lesson plan looks, what a lesson looks like?
Do you break it up?
All right. Let's go crazy.
Okay. I started to say, here we go.
Wait, do you have to launch from there?
Yeah, I can go.
Let's make sure the filters are on.
No, my class is good. We don't have to filter.
We'll ask our cameraman to keep his finger on the off button.
Okay.
Tell you what, I'll make a couple comments while we're waiting for that, and then you can finish after we look at this. So I'm, real quick, we're just, I'm glad that we're doing honors and non-honors wherever Jason went and everybody, yeah. I mean, you know, that just makes total sense of trying to reach the bigger crowd that we can reach. And if you look, the timeline, the learning curve's gonna be the biggest between the first group and the second group. And so while we're implementing in the fall of 14, we're also doing a training. That's the first group, so, I mean, that to me, and I think Jeff mentioned it earlier, of at least we're not cramming it all together at one time, we are spreading it out. But that high school to middle school, that little first transition, I think it's gonna be a little bit tough, but, you know, you're in now. I mean, you're, the boat has launched, so you're gonna figure it out, and I know you'll do well. The last slide, I don't know, I couldn't help but think it's probably not unlike several, you know, seven, eight years ago, when you sat and you looked at, wow, this smart board is a really, really cool thing, and then you went, well, holy cow, it costs what? Times how many classrooms? Times how many schools? And it just, you know, so somehow, that's just gonna be, over time, we're gonna have to get there. But that's, that's part of the deal, and it's exactly what Mr. Schu mentioned. It's where we're going. It's the future of education, and if, not only that, it's the future of how people are gonna interact on a daily basis, just like we do now, every day. And so that's, I mean, the funding, the question is, it's always gonna be there, and it's a constraint or a hurdle that we're just gonna have to figure out how to get around. So anyway, without me taking up any more time, Rob, we'll defer back to you, and if that site is up, we'll go from there.
Just real quickly, this is what the page looks like in English four, there are four different units.
So you can look and see the four different units for my class, and the first one is the emergence of individual identity. And if you click, you'll see it's these different sections, and it's got worldly influence on identity and all these different things that are there. And then you can click on, and each section will drop down, and like, here's Hamlet, and there are reading quizzes, and then there's some videos and things in there, and the students will just work through that. And I can make this available as we go. So when they click on it, everything's not gonna be there. You know, as it becomes assigned, I can release it and let them see it. And then at the beginning of the class, there will be a syllabus that has a calendar. On this day, do this. On this day, do this. On this day, here are your choices. This is due by this day. And my class is not totally finished, and my syllabus is not totally done, but you can see, you can see all the work that's gone in here. And there's, like, in Hamlet, you can, that link will take you to Icurio where they can find Hamlet. And that's why the textbook is no longer necessary, because the literature itself can be found in Icurio. And then there are different activities and things there that are there for them to do. And then each unit is populated like that.
And you were saying students can collaborate on this?
Well, there's gonna be so many different ways for them to collaborate. We use Google Docs a great deal, and so like, one of the things they're gonna do is they're gonna do a survivor challenge, where they go on Google Docs and they choose a tribe, and their tribe will compete against another tribe, and all of that stuff will be done.
They get through that through links from this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they'll be able to go to Google Docs from here, or I can send them an email, 'cause now countywide, we have email addresses, so I can send them an email that has a link to the Google Doc in it. So that will be used along with Schoology.
And that a parent that logs in here would see what the grades are, or what this assignment...
They will be able to look at all these assignments, um, to understand...
Specific to their child.
Well, sure, right.
And then they will be able to see their child's grades. They'll be able to look in my grade book at their child's grades.
Okay. And does that transfer to the parent portal stuff as well, or is that...
No, I think at this point, we have to do it right. So, a couple of things with the parent portal. The parents have a slightly different view than the students will have, because they
won't be able to see where there are collaborative activities, they won't be able to see any other students' work. So they're only to see their students' work, and the parents will have an access code that links them to their student. If they have more than one student, they'll be within the same account for the parent. This will link to Power School, so that's something that we've been working with Schoology on, so that the grades will flow from Schoology into Power School. So when the parents log into the Power School portal that they're already used to seeing, the grades from Schoology will flow over there. And that's the piece that we're still working on with Schoology. It has been done, so we know that it can be done. They've done this all over the country, but of course, North Carolina's iteration of Power School is slightly different, because we've customized it. But we have, we are working now with another district in North Carolina that has made that connection. So parents will have a couple of different options for how they view their students' grades. They can log into Schoology and see them, they can go through the Power School portal that they're used to, either one.
Okay. But related, what other school districts are using this in North Carolina?
So the one that we've been partnering with to talk to them about how they made the Power School-Schoolology integration is Beaufort County. But as far as Schoolology in North Carolina, there aren't a lot of school districts that have gone all in with Schoolology. We are one of the few in North Carolina, but nationwide, it is, it is very prevalent. It's one of the top learning management systems that's in the, in the nation.
And it's really been user-friendly for us, as we've learned how to use it. I hope it's going to be so for the kids, too.
So, students to get into your class, how do they, how do they do that?
There's an access code, you send that little green box?
I know that, part of that, I'm just going back, I'm backing up, I'm sorry. If a student's interested in this type of a class, how would they get it into your class? Is it an application process, is it something that...
Well, what we did for this year is we sort of targeted the kids. We talked to the English teachers that they had in the past, and said, you know, who do you think will be interested? And we did a school survey. We, we surveyed the entire school, every kid that was going into Honors English, and said, would you be interested? And we asked them questions. And so with teacher recommendation and student interest, we put a list together. And then we had a meeting, and invited parents, and talked to the kids, and then the, the people that were still interested after that meeting, talked to them, signed them up, enrolled them in the class.
At each, that's, that's also part of where we allowed each principal to kind of decide how they wanted that to look. Some principals have said, I believe at Hickory Ridge, they've said, if you want to take, you know, we've got two courses of American history, we've got this one that's blended and this one that isn't, and it's going to depend on your schedule, we got to figure that out. And so they've worked with those kids. And so depending on the school, some of them made it more optional than others, but all the kids did have some type of option, whether they wanted to do that.
Like you say, you're going to do a survey afterwards to see how well that worked?
We've got lots of built-in...
Is that part of your survey?
Right, so the individual's courses, the teachers are surveying their students, and then we've got some built-in pieces that are part of our department improvement plan, actually, where we are going to be surveying the teachers, we're going to be surveying parents, surveying the students as well, to see kind of what their experience looked like. And we're really, we want a lot of feedback from the teachers, both in the rotation model and the reach, to see what, how this changed the dynamic of teaching.
Okay. Those are my main questions. I have one for Jason, I guess, when you go to the elementary school level, and you're, you're trying to increase class size, do you need approvals to do that, or how's that, how does that work?
Right now, you know, blended learning at the elementary school would probably be more along the rotation model, so I don't envision increasing class size. Although there are some models out there, and Public Impact is one of them that is trying to...
Just that we mentioned the kindergarten fifty, fifty or hundred...
Yeah, exactly. Kindergarten, three teachers and a hundred kids. So, you know, I'm not sure if, we're not going to do that with the first launch of this, but, you know, it could be something down the road, yeah.
And I guess my big picture, big picture view of that, if, if we continue to do that, and we have the opportunity to, I guess, allow students to do some work from home, that, that would allow us to increase capacities at some of our schools, potentially. So there's a savings...
Correct.
Down, down the road as well. So, thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one last question, please?
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison, go ahead.
And I'll try to make it brief, but there's a funny Mel Brooks movie called To Be or Not to Be, in which actors perform Shakespeare, but they, they do what's called highlights from Hamlet. And what I've always detested about books, especially with something like that, and I don't just mean Hamlet, I mean, all, all the other curriculum things, where they pick and choose, and have little sections. For the example of Hamlet, but I'm asking for the whole picture of this program, is, is that link to Hamlet, the whole Hamlet from A to Z in the original Elizabethan...
It's what you would find in a regular textbook.
But, but that's the whole thing. It's not redacted, or it's not, because Hamlet's a violent kind of thing, you know, it's just really not appropriate in all cases. But, real, but in that, what you're saying is that with this model, you can teach the whole holistic thing, as opposed to bits and pieces and dribs and drabs of the...
I could teach bits and pieces of, let's say, another Shakespeare play.
So do you think high school students in an Honors English class are going to really, or be more likely to read and interact with Hamlet from beginning to, to complete end with this technology?
Well, I'll just tell you a little bit. Last year, I taught a Romeo and Juliet unit, and we did a crime scene investigation. And I created a, a medical examiner, and a fingerprint specialist, and a DNA specialist, and I had the kids reading Romeo and Juliet on their own, outside of class, and they got the opportunity to send emails to ask questions to these specialists, to prove who committed the murders in the play. And they were so into what they were doing, and these emails they were sending, and they were gathering all this evidence, they were reading. They were reading because they liked what they were going to do with it in the end. So to me, if you make it something they're excited about, and something they want to do, they're going to read to get to the point they want to get to. So I'm hoping that's going to work with the things that I plan this year. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And I can tell you that I'm feeling much better than I was a little while ago. We set a record earlier in the meeting for the most references to Facebook than, for the three years I've ever been sitting here. We've now had about twenty Shakespeare references that far dwarfs the Facebook references. So I'm feeling much better about our, our role and mission here as educators. So, okay, we will now move on, and we'll ask Donna Smith to the podium. And this is one of the times that we get to celebrate. And I'll tell you what, I did, I'd be remiss if I didn't do one other thing to Patty, your sons who are here. You guys, your mom's a hero. Thirty-one years in the classroom, making students better and productive members of society is, our hats are off to her, and we certainly do appreciate all her effort. And thank you guys for being here to support her. Okay, we'll, we will move on to 3.3, a celebratory presentation, scholarship summary, and we welcome you, Donna.
Thank you. It truly is a time of celebration, and I look forward to this report every August, because I feel like it's a time when we can salute the work of many people. I'd like to salute now the work of students, parents, school counselors, administrators, and teachers, and also funding sources, because it's the combination of all of those together that has created what we share with you tonight. I'm going to ask, here, I'll pull it up. I was trying to roll it. This is our celebration screen first. You'll see we're at thirty-three million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand and seventy-eight dollars in scholarships. That's tremendous for Cabarrus County School students. And you'll see here, it's a breakdown, it's different this year. Each year, our company works a little bit differently, because you will see they've added the fine arts to it as a component. And this scholarship plus software piece is a, a software piece that serves many districts, and it's a response from districts that add to this. But you'll see, we're looking at a total of a thousand seventy-four scholarships at that value. We think that's tremendous in a lot of ways. And we will see that academic-wise, that's about ninety-four percent of the total value. That says a lot. Where we are as a district, we are continuing to look and analyze who gets these scholarships. And what we're finding at this point, and we'll have further information for you, that in some schools, over half of the academic scholarships are actually going to athletes. And that's the piece we'd like to bring forward, too, because quite often, folks think athletics get, or athletes get athletic scholarships, but actually, we're finding in our district, many of them are getting academic scholarships also. So that's very, very strong. To show you, the next slide is actually showing you the value of scholarships, and this will show this year that we had over six million dollar increase from what we had the previous year. And as you see that, we then ask the question, where do we see the increases? And this next green is where it is so variable year by year. And where we will see, actually here, our increases are primarily in the upper dollar value, the hundred and twenty thousand to the five hundred thousand dollar scholarships, and also in the area of the one thousand to the ten thousand dollar scholarships. And I point this out because each year, this number will change. Sometimes we will have more at the lower level, sometimes we'll have fewer at the higher level. It just depends on the students and opportunities that are afforded to them. We then break it down, and we see percentage by school, and you will see how each school has contributed to this total, and that's an important piece there. There is one school that did not bring scholarships in this year, which is interesting on the next slide. And yet this school brought more folks to post-secondary education than they ever have before, and that's the PLC. They actually had, I think, doubled or tripled their college representation. That's the next part I'll be bringing back to you, because we're now studying the schools that our students are going to, so that we can get a better feel in terms of percentage of students year by year that are attending specific schools. But while you may see that for PLC, we have to indicate from a graduation and post-secondary point of view, they have far excelled from their previous history, too. I'd like to point out here, we see increases with Central, we see increases with Concord High School, we see increases also with Mount Pleasant High School, Northwest Cabarrus, and the Concord-Kennapples Early College Program. And the increases I'm talking about would be the number of scholarships, as well as the number of scholarships awarded to students, as you scan those totals. We also each year like to take a moment and look at race, because we want to make sure our scholarships opportunities are occurring across the areas. And what we will see here, we are up in our awards to African-Americans, we're also up in our award to Hispanic youth, as well as the white. We still have five scholarships to account for. If you tried to add some totals here to say, okay, where did that one fit? We'll be back with you with that number. But again, feeling really good, particularly with our increase in the Hispanic graduation rate, as well as our number of scholarships that are being awarded to that group of folk also. Which brings us to the screen that I always place a lot of value in, which looks at several things. The other counts have been somewhat duplicate counts, and this one will show us, one, the total scholarships from 2011 all the way to 2014, and we can see how we are seeing a steady increase in that. We'll also see that we're increasing in the number of graduating seniors, which is neat to see. And then we look at seniors receiving scholarships, and this is the unduplicated count. So this year, we awarded, there were four hundred and sixty-seven seniors in our graduating classes that were awarded scholarships, which accounts to twenty-two point eight percent of our graduating class. And we can see for the last four years, we're fluctuating even between nineteen and twenty-three percent, twenty-three and a half percent. We're still wanting to see where that is, and our goal continues to be each year to try to impact greater the class. We realize the variables there depend on several things. One, students wanting to secure scholarships. The other thing, wanting to secure them in advance. Quite often, students will ask about it after the fact. And I have to say, it's not because they haven't been given announcements. If anything, our schools have doubled the amount of announcements that are coming, whether it's through texting, whether it's through email, or a combination of sources. So our counselors have looked hard to find ways to make sure that they are aware of those scholarships. So tonight, I feel like we're celebrating lots of things. That's a nice total. It also shows us students who are going for post-secondary instruction across all sorts of colleges, and that's where we'd like to come back later and share with you that. We're also looking forward to the college fair that's already been planned for this year on September the twenty-third, and our numbers have grown so large, we'll be at the arena this year, because we've outgrown the Boys and Girls Club. So that speaks well for the CACRO as they come here, because we're seeing somewhere between seventy and ninety-something colleges and universities that come. So we feel like we're starting to establish our presence better and better in Cabarrus. And so, I'd also too like to salute at this time, because I know this could be broadcast, but our community members. At several of our schools, we have more and more community members who are offering personal scholarships, and that starts to speak higher of our local community, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Schu, the value that we are placing on education. So I celebrate tonight the work of many, many people. But again, as we salute internal to school, we also salute external, and want to make students and parents aware we're ready to start for next year. And that's the report.
Fantastic. Thank you, Donna. We appreciate that very much. And any questions or comments? And we'll start with Mr. Walter.
Well, again, it's obviously great news and exciting to, to see the numbers. In fact, you know, this, this year, and pointing out the community, community members that actually contribute. If a community member wanted to come and, and do a scholarship, how would they go about letting us know about that?
There's two ways they do that. Sometimes community members will contact directly the school that they want to work that scholarship through, or if they're doing a district piece, they'll contact Student Services Office, and we walk them through the steps.
And we keep track of most of these scholarships, or there's some that we don't, don't catch, or is, or...
I think that's a great question. The scholarships here reflect what the counselors were able to get as of the time of graduation. We do have some faith communities that issue scholarships after that time. So if you really push the point, our number's probably greater than here, because there are other scholarships awarded after the middle of June.
I appreciate you compiling the numbers for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Schumaker?
Well, Donna, you can tell the, tell of our high school counselors that they've done a great job, and...
Thank you.
This is just great news. Of our remark to Blake, I said, this is about, about three-quarters of our budget from the county, so. It is really neat to see this type of, this type of reward for our students, and I'm just really, really happy for the children and the students that were able to get this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't say a lot, Donna. I think the report says it all. I appreciate you taking the time to compile it, and I too like to see this in August when it comes around, to see that we're progressing forward, graduation rates increasing. So that means more and more seniors are crossing the stage, and more and more of them are going to college, and they're getting scholarships. So, it's all good.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison?
I thought I had shaken two thousand students' hands back in June, and your report confirms that for me. And as, as much as Doc, as much as Principal Carla Black is on Facebook promoting scholarships all during the year, I just have this mental vision of her chasing eleventh graders down the hall, saying, fill this form out, fill this form out. But she and other principals and counselors are doing a great job of putting the process in front of students, and making them see the value and, and the, the long-term commitment that the students are making to themselves by going through this scholarship processes for the different programs. What I wouldn't mind seeing, if it's at all possible sometime in the future, or for next year, is where the scholarships are coming from. Now, you've got your one slide about fine arts and, and other things, but in terms of either the colleges, or geographically, where students are taking these scholarships, or, or kind of where the scholarship is coming from in order for the student to be in a certain program. That would be interesting, if there were a lot of STEM types of scholarships that were leading them to Massachusetts Institute of Technology, or something. That would, that would, I think, be very interesting, follow-through information, if, if we could pull that together.
All right. We could certainly add that to the universities and colleges, and community colleges we're looking at now.
Yeah, and, and in some cases, it may be a particular program, or might be more general, but I think that would be interesting to know where our kids are taking their hard-earned high school credentials, and what programs they're aiming toward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Did you have a comment you want to make? Go key, key up.
Sorry, relative to the data you're asking for, we just entered an agreement with the Clearinghouse data folks that will provide us lots of information relative to our graduates with, our graduates, which college and universities that they're attending, which ones stay the course and actually graduate with degrees, those sorts of pieces of information. So we're very excited about being able to bring that information to the board, because you've asked for it several times, and we finally found a source that can provide it.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips?
Thinking, what, why, why do we spend two Monday nights a month doing this? Why does Kelly spend all weekend poring over state budget documents? Why does Mrs. Norris spend her entire summer working on development of new courses? Why do we do what we do? That's why. Because the institutions of higher learning in this country value a diploma from the Cabarrus County Schools.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And with that, we will move on to 3.04. We'll ask Dave to come up. Oh.
I'm sorry, I asked you, you know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Phil, we're going to get a presentation on our facility needs assessment, and Dave, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Perhaps another celebration item. The, in a minute, Steve Hawley and Carl Baxmeyer with Fannie Howey will come up and give a In a minute, Steve Hawley and Carl Baxmeyer with Fanning Howey will come up and give a presentation of the draft facility needs assessment. A little bit of history on this, the board approved this item in mid-April, and then the work really began. But did have to wait for testing and interview celebrations and things like that to end, so that we didn't disrupt the operations of the school. But we are at that point where, tonight, it is the draft presentation. It is not complete. It is not a final set. There still are additional efforts that need to be made, in addition to the consultants. The school systems part really does begin where we do need to go through all of their work and evaluate it and make sure that it's correct, that they didn't accidentally do have a typo or get something on the wrong line, or something basic like that. And we also need to look at some of the evaluations and make sure that we agree with it, that it's consistent. So that evaluation process does need to occur. The construction committee has been involved in this process to provide guidance and to help shape the path for this effort and the report. Tonight, really, it's your opportunity to see the report and mull it over and give some thought and provide some feedback. So it's not by any means a completed effort. Again, we are seeking the input and your response. After the presentation, we'll do some question and answer. We will be mindful of the time as far as the presentation. We did receive a very detailed question and answer paper today, which we have responded to, but I certainly don't expect that everybody's had a chance to read it. So we'll go over that item, too. So at this time, Steve and Carl.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Gentlemen, ladies, you have quite a bit of stamina. This is really going here. Steve Hawley with Fanning Howey, I manage the Cary office, and Carl Baxmeyer, he's the director of our Solutions Group. And we kind of tag-team this effort. I handled more of the scheduling and the assessment side. Carl handled the educational adequacy. He's also our VFA expert. So hopefully, we got all the bases covered for you tonight. What we wanted to talk about tonight was just to update you on what we've been doing. As Dave mentioned, we're still collecting a little tiny bit of data left, and we have some analysis to do on that data. The numbers that are in the study are, they're not final, they're probably going to go up. There are some numbers in there that we can look at that I think are worth talking about tonight. So for the last 10 or 12 weeks, we were doing fieldwork. We went to 32 of your schools. We're probably 95 percent complete on data collection, and we're probably somewhere about 75 percent on the analysis and the reporting. So thought maybe just painting a broad picture, if you know, that was appropriate. And I guess if we could just through some of the pages in the report here. All right. So here's our team of people that we've been working with here. Of course, our first presentation of the board tonight. We had about 15 assessors, design professionals, and three individual educational adequacy And this was the school list we started with. There were some changes as we went along. We actually were a little under budget, so we added a school, Royal Oaks Elementary. And we were just out there last week, so that's some of the data that we haven't gotten into our data stream yet. And then Old Odell came off the list, coming off the list. Some of the priorities expressed to us in the process of our selection was that the district was interested in developing a reliable database that could be used for the future capital planning efforts. And we did, on 32 of the schools, do facilities conditions assessments. 22, we did educational adequacy. And the thinking was that the last 10 were your newest schools, that they were already up to your program. So we didn't really want to spend that money there, it was better spent elsewhere. And we did employ a tablet-based software system by VFA, and I think that was really the strength of our selection. Some of these gentlemen could speak to that, who interviewed us. It's very sophisticated. We'll let Carl talk about that here in just a minute. But I did want to just quickly run through what kind of the goals were of the study and trying to get a database for capital planning efforts. I know you're in the middle of that. You sure heard a lot about that tonight. Hopefully, we can help you build a good story as you move forward there. Also, wanted to incorporate through the software lifecycle system cycles, which are helpful in planning, and also to provide any supplemental data related to repairs and maintenance that our assessors saw along the way. The conditions assessment was a school-by-school basis. We did not necessarily go room by room. It was systems-based. And like I said, we had design professionals for the 22 schools and educational adequacy for the earlier 22 schools, not the 10 later ones. Permanent structures that were used for educational purposes were what we assessed, and that did not include storage buildings and greenhouses and the modulators and things like that. So I did throw in some terminology here. There's a couple I think we're going to talk about in more detail tonight. The Facility Condition Index is what our software uses to measure basically the condition of the school. It's a ratio of the cost of the repairs and the renewals to the actual cost of replacement. So a newer school, you would expect that very few repairs required, so the number would be basically zero. The older schools, you start spending more on repair and renewals, and that number, once it gets up to about .5, is an area where you need to start thinking about, maybe should I be spending more money on this school or not? So that's the metric that this software is built around. There's also another metric. It shows up on our tables. It's the Requirements Index, and that's basically the FCI, which is one year's worth of analysis, spread out over five years. So you can see what's going to happen to the repairs and renewals over a five-year period. But typically, that number goes up a little bit more. And I think at this time, since most of you are new to the software, I'd like to ask Carl to kind of run us through how that works.
Sure.
Thank you. Basically, the difference between what we're bringing to you and a traditional assessment is, a traditional assessment is just done at one particular point in time. An assessor would walk through a space, would look at a system and say, gee, that pump needs to be replaced. Those windows are leaking, they need to be replaced. What this does is, everything is tied to the year in which it was built or installed. And then, for each one of those systems, there is a metric established by BOMA, the Building and Operations Maintenance Association, that has a life cycle associated with it. So a roof, for instance, typically 20 years. So what the software then does is, it indexes everything to where it is on that continuum of its life cycle. So at the end of the day, the board, the administration, the district, as you're looking forward, you not only know what your immediate needs are, but you are able to look out into the future and say, you know, we really don't have a need right now for that heating and ventilating system, but in the year 2018 or 2024, that's going to come online. And as Steve said, the initial index is the FCI, the one-year cost, and the, excuse me, the RI, which is the five-year cost. But in addition, the software does go out into the future, so that you can have a listing of when, and begin to be more proactive as you're looking forward, you've got that data at your disposal as to when you need to put a placeholder in the budget for, this is something we're going to have to look at. That doesn't mean that that heating system is going to collapse on that year, but technically, that's the year it expires, and you can be prepared for those additional costs. So that's the software. 15 assessors in the field with tablets. I wanted to share, there's a good amount of detail in the report about the methodology and the process. I don't want to get into that tonight unless you have questions about it. But I did want to share with you some of the observations. You know, we've been in a lot of districts, and it was nice to come to a district as well-cared-for as yours. The thing that, a couple of things that stood out to us, one is, you seem to have been making some very good use of what are really been some bad financial times for education. We saw a lot of improvements in your schools that I think speaks well to your ability to find alternate funding and act on it. Some of those things were the technology upgrades, and I'll vouch for Kelly here, the technology backbone, fantastic. I mean, it didn't matter how old or new the school was, it had the same high quality. Both our technology assessor and our educational adequacy assessors noticed that and made note of it. So kudos to you for that. Other things, you know, typical qualified school construction bond kind of work, HVAC windows, things like that. We saw a lot of that going on. There were a couple additions. We also saw that there were, we actually didn't include this in our data, because it looked like this work was mostly done, but the incorporation of the security vestibules in your schools, looks like maybe you started on that last summer, and it was, we were here assessing this summer, and we did see some of your crew working, it looked like they were finishing up that work. And then that also included the camera system, the visitor entry system. We saw that every school we were at. So it's good to get those things up and running. I guess some other observations, maintenance was top-notch and exceptional custodial care. Every school that I went into, a custodian walked with me, took the time to walk with me, and several other assessors, too. But the schools were in really great shape. Because of that situation, we were actually able to increase some of the lifecycle costs that came with the software in BOMA. And they were the things that you would normally replace on a short cycle, like the vinyl composition tile flooring, which you have a lot of in your schools, and carpet. We raised both of those from their 10-year to 20 years on the tile and 15 on carpet. And then the acoustic panel ceilings, we bumped those up to 25 years. Now, having walked through all the buildings, we did see some other things that are probably going to need to be a concern of you, and I think this has been discussed here. Some of the roofs are, I think, probably going a little bit early. So the VFA software has these in at 25 years. We changed that to 20 years. So all the data that we're compiling is based on a 20-year. So you had a series of schools start in 1996, Weddington Hills. I think you guys built 21 schools since that time. Well, 20 years ago, guess what? Weddington Hills is ready for renewal. So you've got 21 roofs that are going to need to be replaced systematically over the next few years. And there were a few, I mean, 20 years, I'm not sure you're getting 20 years out of some of these. I think Rocky River was a school where there was a lot of repair on the interior related to ceiling. You know, there's a ceiling tile program replacement to, you know, take care of moldy tiles, excuse me, moldy tiles. But there were also soffits that were peeling, but had you from the roof leak. So obviously, that would be a little bit higher up than 20 years. We understand that you used to have routine maintenance programs, and I don't know if there's any chance of getting those back, but the lifecycle data that we'll give you for painting and things that need quicker renewal will certainly be something that comes from our data stream. Parking lots, we did see a lot of parking lots needed patching. Probably ceiling would be a good maintenance-type program to initiate, to make the parking lots last longer. As far as your site work, that was probably really the biggest thing we noticed. And then I guess the last piece of the puzzle for us was, you do have a lot of older schools, schools that are 50 years and older, and those are all coming up on significant renewals for structure and important things like that. So I had to put a short list together of the schools that, to us, look like they're in that above .5 FCI, and what are we going to do with these as we move forward. And there's also some supplementary data on the educational adequacy. I don't know if you want to...
Well, we can get to that when we get to the, start talking about educational adequacy.
Well, this might be a good time. I'm not sure there's, I think those are the highlights of what we saw, you know, really well-cared-for district and a couple areas of concern. So I think the data that comes out will help support that for you. Why don't you run through the adequacy? So parallel with the assessments of conditions, there's the assessment of educational adequacy. And that has a numerical score as well. It's a different ranking system. Did you want to scroll down to that so the public can see that? You might want to look at some of that stuff. What we did on the educational adequacy is, we have a standard set of criteria that we look at that was then adjusted to reflect the unique situations in Cabarrus County. In addition, the scoring initially was on a 1 to 10 scale for everything. And as we worked with the construction committee, we decided to modify that a little bit, because collectively, we felt, you know, does everything really have to score a 10 to meet the criteria? And there are some areas in which that isn't really true, and that if it's exceeding that, it should get a little bit extra bonus point, if you will. So we came up with a target score, which had the 10 in most areas, but in some areas, an eight was really what we were aiming for. And if the school exceeded that a little bit, then it got some extra points. And we felt that that was a fair method of evaluating the schools on the scale. So the assessors went through, looked at all the schools, filled out the score sheet. The one thing we have not done is had our internal review. What we like to do is have the assessors and I get together and collectively look for any inconsistencies, anything that, I think, the questions that Dr. Phillips provided, one of them was, saw a zero on one, probably a typo, obviously. So we have not done that yet. So I caution you that there will be some slight adjustments in the overall educational adequacy. But in keeping with the Road to Personalization presentation that you had a few minutes ago, we're really looking at, what are those elements in a school that support 21st century learning? Are there spaces for differentiated learning? The research shows that students perform better in a classroom that's well-lit, that is comfortable from a temperature and humidity standpoint. So we looked at all of those criteria and evaluated, how well did the spaces that are currently existing meet the quote-unquote "ideal" spaces throughout the district? And basically, the buildings measured up very well. There were some that fell into the excellent category, some that were good, a couple fair, no poor schools. And we use the program of spaces that the district has adopted, as far as sizes go, to evaluate the size of the spaces as well. There's also a table in there that shows you which criteria were applied to which class of schools. In other words, obviously, you don't consider, does a high school have a kindergarten room? Or does an elementary school have a science lab? But there were some variances in there, so we tried to, we noted those on that table for all those metrics. Just kind of scrolling through that quickly. Steve has already touched on the technology. Well above average, space in general meet the standards that have been established in your program of spaces. And there's possible to provide a significant degree of differentiated learning due to the size of the classroom and the spaces within the building. So if you look at the results, the target for the elementary schools was 1290. And the graph, the chart that's up on the screen and in your handout, shows how each one of those schools, how close they came to the 1290 target. For the middle schools, the target was 1218. And again, the five schools that were evaluated. And for the high schools, it was 1216, and we evaluated four of the high schools. And this chart, this table, rather, shows the points, the percentage, and the rating that it received for the elementary and for the middle and the high schools. I'm sure there'll be more questions. We just want to finish with our presentation and get on to your questions. If we can bring this back around to the conditions part of it, this is a table that shows, if you look in the right-hand side, there's a
shows, if you look in the right-hand side, there's a five-year rating that gives an indication of what the FCI, how the FCI would rank this. And this, I'm sorry, not the FCI, the five-year, the RI. And you can see that your older schools tend to be in that red range where maybe they need to be replaced, or maybe there's something else we can do with these schools, or maybe they just need to be evaluated. And the newer your schools get, the better the scores. The schools from the 80s to the 90s were in the fair range, and then starting with your new schools in 96 on, everything was in a good to excellent range based on the numbers that we had to date so far. So, the metric is pairing, in some of these cases where you have an evaluate school, you might want to look at the educational adequacy, see how the two of those line up, see if maybe there's some additional information that you can glean from that. There was a... This is the chart that I would not really encourage you to look at, but I think everyone wants to know what that number is. We're still collecting data, so that number's probably going to go up some more. That's not where we see this at right now. We also would like to spend some more time with the construction group and evaluate the systems that are in each of these reports.
With that...
Okay.
Brief overview of where we're at.
Okay.
Love to answer your questions.
Well, we appreciate the overview. And board members, I don't know if you were able to see the email you got today, the reply. Dr. Phillips had a pretty extensive list of questions and pretty detailed. So, that has... Quite honestly, I talked to Dave today, and I wasn't expecting it to get all the answers today. And I haven't looked at the reply, but I know we got one. So, anyway, you may have questions that Jeff has already pinned on them and that they've already answered. But with that said, feel free to ask a couple of questions here now, and we'll start with Dr. Phillips.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for coming here tonight. This is going to be a tremendous reference for all of us. I've been on the board now for, this is my second year, and I've always struggled when the questions come up about, well, which school do we need to, you know, focus on if we go to a bond issue for replacement? Or do we repair it? And this is the kind of information that we really have needed in order to make an educated decision. If I understand it right, your RI is, I have a ratio of the cost it's going to take to repair the school just to bring it back up to sort of its original condition, divided by what you think the replacement cost would be of building a brand-new school of the same size, same number of rooms, and so on and so forth?
That's exactly it.
Okay. And so, you're saying that in general, once that number gets over 50%, you really need to start thinking about it.
Start thinking about it.
And then, what you just said really turned the light bulb on, is that we need to also look at this educational adequacy, or what is the term that you use?
Educational adequacy, correct.
Educational adequacy. So, let me just take Beverly Hills as the example. So, Beverly Hills in your FCI, it's like at 68% or something like that. It's a... It was one of the ones that was like, it was flagged as replace.
That's next one. There it is.
Okay, 62. So, in five years' time, we'll have to spend 62% of its replacement value to bring it up to condition. And given the difficulty in finding money to build new schools in this county, spending 62% instead of 100% will have a lot of attraction. However, if I look at your educational adequacy for Beverly Hills, it's saying that Beverly Hills educational adequacy is 75%. So, even if we did all those repairs and brought it back up to its brand-spanking-new condition, it's still only going to have 75% of the things that we're saying should be in an elementary school, whereas if you take one of our newer schools, like Harrisburg, it's at 94%. So, the children that would be going to Beverly Hills, while they might have a renovated sparkling school, still aren't getting the same experience. And so, we need to take both of those things into account. Okay. Well, that is helpful to me. The other thing that, you know, I did, of course, immediately is I go, "Shh, go down to the bottom. What's the total number? What's the bottom line?" And it was $118 million over five years. And you may think that's a lot of money, but we don't, because we've been looking at numbers that are even bigger than that. And I was trying to understand why your number was less than the one that we sent to the county saying, "This is what we're going to need over the next five years." And so, maybe you could speak a little bit to the things that you didn't include, and Dave may also have to add in here on that.
There are a couple of things. First of all, the data stream is not complete. There's a few things missing, so that's going to go up. Royal Oaks is not in there completely yet either, so that'll make it go up. We also are working with in-kind replacements. So, a roof replacement, that's a 15-year black rubber roof, is going to be priced at that going back in. It may not be the choice you made when you made that budget for the commissioners, and I wouldn't recommend that either. You might have wanted a nicer roof, and you might have wanted more insulation. So, there's a cost differential there, and that's one of the things that we imagine we would talk with the committee about. We have this fabulous ability to print out any set of data you want, and we can isolate the roofs, and we can talk about just the roofs and how you... What your plan is for replacing them. Are you going to use a more expensive roof? And we can adjust the price. The price, by the way, from VFA, is benchmarked right into RS Means, which is a national cost database. So, we can pick different roof systems out of their database, so we can help build that plan for you. That would be another piece of that.
Yeah. And a couple other components that are not included in this study. That's accounting for growth, new schools, additions for growth. It also is looking at the program, program of space, and it's taking a rigid look at that. If you look at the, some of the schools, some of the facilities that they are not including, it's including a football field, but it's not looking at the stadium. It's not looking at the fieldhouse. It's not looking at the concessions. It's not looking at the restrooms. It's not looking at a lot of those support spaces. We also are looking at, where we receive requests from schools, and the example of A.T. Allen, they asked for a storage building. So, that wouldn't be, you know, on there. It's a new storage building. They asked for some additional landscaping, raised planters and things like that for outdoor science classrooms. That's not going to be on here. So, some of those wants and additional needs, it's not physically there already. That's not going to be in this study. So, you're going, your list, the list that has been compiled over the years is incorporating many of those items. Okay. So, a lot of... And also, you didn't, you excluded Mount Pleasant Middle, because we knew that we were going to be replacing that anyway. So, the cost of that is not there. The cost of the new elementary school on the northwest side is not there. The cost of Royal Oaks is not there. The cost of dealing with the Glen Center is not there. And what was the other? Oh, Coltrane Web and Central. Okay. So, when we add all those things in, then we start getting up to the, probably the $200 million number that we were discussing a couple of months ago. It is increasing, but the great thing about this study is you're going to have very good reliable data, very good reliable pricing that really we aren't going to dispute. But again, we have to go through basically a negotiation period of, you know, some of these items, and to look at it, and some things we may agree with, some things we may say, hey, more needs to be done that's in there. So, there still is that that needs to occur. Okay. Yeah. Well, I actually haven't had time to go through all of the answers to my questions, but I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And given the late hour and the fact that we have a closed session coming up after this, I think I'll defer to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
And I'm wowed and extremely impressed with the beginning, even in draft form, of the data that you're accumulating here. I'm very impressed with that, and it's going to be, it's going to be used. It's going to be put to use, and as I recall, when presentations were being made back in the spring in the bidding process, I think it was impressed upon all the bidders and yourself as well, that the data would be used and maintained and kept alive and renewed or refreshed, you know, going forward. So, that's what I'm looking forward to in the long-term use of this data as opposed to a snapshot in time. So, one question, you said there were, I don't mean gaps, but little things that have not yet been pinned down. This is why it's in a draft form. But in, for example, in the appendix B, in the high school group, all high schools have water fountains, but none of the high schools had any score for their water fountains. So, that's one thing that you haven't yet graded or somehow designated a score for, per se. That's an example, I presume, of something that you have still got to pin down. Not, I don't mean to be trivial, I don't mean to sound trivial, but that's an example of some elements that you still need to get data on.
We do.
That's not a good example. It's not a big example, but...
Excuse me. Dr. Phillips pointed out, the requirement is that there be an auditorium with the high schools. That data was collected, but it isn't in the table.
Right.
So, that was something that was brought to our attention. We'll go back with the two assessors, and the three of us will make sure that that's included.
And just one last thing. I'll admit to being a nerd, or not even a wonk, just a geek or something to that, but I'm a technical writer by trade. When I get these types of soft copies, I press Ctrl and F, and I want to search for Royal Oaks or some other by name, and I cannot do that with these PDF files. A Word document just needs to be converted to PDF, and a user like myself can find targeted information. But in this format, I can't find targeted information. Now, that forces me, of course, to read the whole thing and understand it holistically. I appreciate that, but...
That was in my direction, to make sure you read the whole thing.
I bet you did. I knew there was a conspiracy going on here. But I would appreciate some greater, I don't mean flexibility, but usability in this data going forward or in the next iteration of it. But certainly on request, I'm sure our facilities department can pull that information for us. I would find it more useful if it were searchable as a file when it's brought back to us in final version.
I think that's a reasonable request. I mean, surely, I mean, that's just something you guys can send to David. David can send it to the board members.
And that was originally emphasized on my part, as I recall. I want usable data that I can refer to, especially as voluminous as this is, but I need to be able to search through it by keywords, if that's possible, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu, you have any questions or comments?
I don't really have any questions, Mr. Chairman. I spent considerable time going through the 44 pages of your initial draft here, and I find it quite impressive, to be honest with you. I felt like that it was explained very much in detail, the terminology that you used. And there was one that I'm trying to remember, which one it was, the terminology where that you gave consideration to, say, for example, a floor covering that may have been, had a life, useful life expectancy of, say, 20 or 10 years, and you say, hey, look, this is in much better condition, and it's probably got another eight or 10. And so, you gave consideration to those type things, whereas it could have been the other way, such as in the roofs, where they have, you know, maybe a 25-year life expectancy. You said, look, this needs a little bit more attention. It's probably going to need some attention in the next 12 to 15 or 20 years, you know, instead of the full 25-year life expectancy. And I appreciated that, you know, aspect of the report. And it's a lot to comprehend. And so, based on that statement, I don't really have a lot of questions at this time, because a documentation of this sort takes a little bit of time to comprehend, and since we just got it within the last couple of days. And amongst other agenda items and other pressing issues, the opportunity to raise questions hasn't come yet, but I'm sure as we work forward with the final version, that I'm sure there'll be questions and concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. And along that note, what we may do is just have you back, and we'll work out the time of your presentation, so you don't have to sit here three hours like you did tonight. But it is, it's a lot to take in. I'm eager to read through Jeff's, the answers to Jeff's question, because I read through his document, and I think a lot of that was spot-on, and I just want to read the answers to that. But it is, it's going to take a little while for us to digest it. But because Mr. Schumaker was on the committee with us, I'm going to save him for last, and we're going to go on to Mr. Walter.
Yeah. I haven't had a whole lot of time to look at it, other than what we've seen tonight. Is there a different rating system for the elementary school compared to the other schools?
Slightly.
And why was that?
Just in the metrics that were considered.
I understand the metrics were different, but your point, or the way you're rating these things, you have 10, 8, 5, and 0 on those, but when you go to the high schools and the other ones, you've got more than just a 10, 8, 5, and 0. You've added sevens and twos and threes and what have you.
Two different assessors, and one assessor, Troy Glover, likes to really delve in there. He gave us voluminous notes on why he rated things a 7 rather than an 8.
Well, that's good for you to have to explain it to us.
Right. And we will incorporate a synopsis of his notes in the final documents so that you can see. Robin, on the other hand, O'Hara, made notes on the floor plans, and we're in the process of taking those off of the floor plans and putting those in a readable form as well.
Okay. And we also talked about this being a living kind of document that can be updated. How does that work?
That's a great question. The VFA software, first of all, gets updated annually when the new means data comes out. Secondly, the construction committee asked us, and I neglected to say this, we have, we're in the process of setting up a user account so that Dave or anybody can go on there and look at the data, generate reports. Now that the data is in there, as soon as we finalize it, that data will be, excuse me, that data will be in there, and anybody in the district can get the password to get it.
Give an example of a report that can be generated.
Sure. You could, for instance, on the funding, right now, if you look in there, there's a graph that shows the funding over the next 20 years. It jumps up and down depending on when. You might say, you know, what if we leveled that off? What if we had a fixed amount that we were going to spend every year? What does that do? What gets deferred? You could generate that sort of a report.
So, some what-if scenarios?
Yes.
You can do the same thing that David's asking for, if you wanted to eliminate by, identify it by a school or sort it by a school or something to that effect. They would generate a report for that.
And we have, we didn't want to overwhelm you with paper.
But here we go.
But we'll give you one piece of paper to consider in your spare time. This is just one report. This is a detailed funding report needs by year for Beverly, Beverly Hills, I believe. So, what you're seeing is a listing of, by year, of the needs that were identified either by the user saying that, gee, that's something that needs to be addressed, or because it's reached the end of its useful life. So, you can take a look at that, and this is a small snapshot of, there's roughly 7,500 data points that we've already collected and a few more to be added as these last few surveys.
This is comparatively huge compared to what we have, the spreadsheets that we've been working off of for the last year. So, this is extremely valuable, and I appreciate that. My last question, how do we, how do we, what is our plan for these other schools that aren't included, aren't included at this point? Are we going to do that in-house, or how do we?
As far as the other schools that are not included, we have asked Fanning Howey for pricing information for those additional schools. We have received it. We did add one school, and that was the Royal Oaks School. The additional funding that was required is, it exceeds the budget. So, really, as a Board of Education, you have to decide whether the additional facilities are ones that you do once studied, and then the school system will be trying to identify those funds.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Schumaker? Thank you. Thank you, guys, for this report, and I look forward to the final one, and hopefully, we can get the other schools done as well. It'll be interesting to see how the Royal Oaks one bears out.
It'll be interesting to see how the Royal Oaks one bears out. Did you say that you had 7,500 data points, and that is like systems or equipment that had been identified throughout all the schools that you studied, the 22 schools?
Yes.
That you studied so far? So there's still a number of schools that didn't get studied. So that number, how many, how many's left? Didn't you say it was 40 total?
We have, we actually have those data points in our VFA for the 32 schools.
Okay. So you got 7,500 for the 32, and then there's still 40 schools, so there's still eight more left to be assessed. All right. Also, board members, this report here can also show a graph per school, so you can show what the funding allocation would be on each school. And you, the graph that you see displayed on this, on the display here, could be done at each school. So the principal at that school could actually be privy to exactly what their funding needs are based on, on this, and, and make some arrangements that way. It can, you know, it's, it's a better way to help attack what you want and where you want to go. So there's a lot of different ways of also showing this information, and I think, Dave, can you come forward for a second? One of the things that we talked about as a board is the VFA software was portable into SchoolDude. And where do y'all stand on getting that set up?
The, several steps need to occur. Number one, this, this is the first step. It's identifying the needs. Really, the, the school system, you know, we're going to need to develop a plan. What is the next step? And it's a, it's a planning group that probably is going to need to come together to help prioritize what those needs are to develop the plan, whether it's, you know, bond referendums, whether it's the construction programs, what schools to replace, what schools to have additions, what schools to possibly repurpose. As far as, so that needs to happen. The school system will also need to determine, you know, with SchoolDude, as far as the integration, how far it wants to go with that, how many licenses it needs to go with that. So all of that really needs to continue to be discussed and worked out, and the money needs to be, you know, identified as to how to support that. It needs to be a continuing effort, and it's, again, this is step one.
Right. So on your plate is to give us the information we need to help assess how we integrate the VFA into the SchoolDude. So I guess that's a thing, a next step for you folks?
For the school system, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here and for your patience, you know, in the, the start of the meeting. I'm, I'm not going to drag this out anymore. We've still got questions and data to go through, and we will, what we'll do, as I mentioned before, we'll just invite you guys back, and, because I think this is information that we, we knew was going to be valuable to us in planning and providing information to our commissioners on what our needs are and future needs, and on the, as far as the facilities go. So we will look forward to seeing you guys again soon, and we'll, we'll look to Dave to get it in a Word document, so that these guys can look through it and, and, and search it and whatnot. So fantastic. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate having you. Board members, we're going to take...
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, just, I forgot to say one thing earlier, and it was because of a comment that you made. You said that your assessors, when going through our buildings, concluded that they have had exceptional custodial care. Now, I, I don't hear that very often in institutions that I'm involved in, and I, I think that's a phenomenal statement, and I think we should consider having some kind of a recognition event for our building custodians at a future board meeting. To get that kind of unsolicited comment from, from outsiders is really a blue-ribbon thing that we should celebrate.
Yeah. I wholeheartedly agree. I think you are 100% correct there, and we will, yes, you want to comment on that?
I was just going to add that they also said that the maintenance department did an exceptional job, too. So I don't want them to get left out, I want them to get the credit.
You wait your turn, Burnett.
I'm on, I'm on. I'm construction. It'll be a second meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I think that's an excellent idea, and we'll make a note of that, and we will move on. And with that, board members, we're going to take a short 10-minute break, since we've been plowing through for quite some time, and we'll, we'll reconvene at 20 till.